On Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, and I will call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Mr. Manager or Council, are there any adjustments to the agenda for consideration?
None from me, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Were we adding youth first mentoring?
I believe youth first mentoring was going to be present.
I did email.
Yes, it wasn't on the agenda, but yeah, I think they could speak during the either the budget or during the the warning discussion, and they would be relevant for that.
Okay.
Is there a way?
Probably the ballot, probably the warning is more appropriate.
Okay.
All right, so if they do participate, we'll put them under the warning. Got it. Anything else, Council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item three, which is visitors and communications. Is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Council will be approving the minutes of the meeting of 3:25, 25, and 4:00, 11:25. Do we have any licenses or permits this evening? We do not approve the RLF agreements, volunteer appointments, those are both in your packet. There are two appointments to the Cal Pastor Stewardship Committee, and I'd like to thank the Chair. So as you know, Council, if the Chair recommends reappearance of a member, we don't ask that member to come in for an interview with the Council. And I wanted to thank the Chair because I thought her, a lot of times we get a one paragraph memo from them, or a one sentence memo, and she took the time to really explain herself. So thank you for that very much. And lastly, Council, I don't believe we have any, do you? Are you executing any contracts?
Yes, the paving bed.
The, I'm sorry?
The paving bed.
Ah, oh yay, finally. Okay, anything else? Any discussion? All entertaining motion?
Yes, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue Paxman? Oh, you're muted, Sue. If you're trying to speak, we can unmute you from here.
I can ask her to unmute you. Maybe it was in.
Okay, yeah, no worries. If you get sorted, Sue, just just jump in and I'll recognize you. So Council, you've heard the consent agenda, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, moved by Council Deering, seconded by Council Stockwell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much, Council. We're going to approve the city warrants, we're going to approve the week of 4/9/25 and ratify the week of 4/25. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, got that. All those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
And I'm abstaining.
Noted. She catch up.
Yep.
No worries. Jump right in.
Okay, with the annual town meeting quickly approaching, May 13th, Monday, May 7th, was the deadline for candidates to submit their consent forms and petitions. And as of 5 o'clock last night, the Clerk's Office had received five petitions, including from Ward 1, Eddie Rouse, Beth Hilgartner, from Ward 2, in no particular order, Jeff Bergeron, Ward 3, Sam Stockwell and Don Ruthier. Right now would be a great time for you to start submitting your requests for absentee ballots. You may do so by two different methods. You may go onto your voter page, myvoterpage.vermont.gov, or call the Clerk's Office. Looking forward towards May 3rd, it is greenup day. The Clerk's Office has sign up sheets in the green bags, and the sign up sheets are meant for you to just determine what areas you want to cover, so those areas aren't passed over or done a second time. Darn Tough has called and asked for suggested areas that their team could volunteer to help clean up, so if you have any suggestions, please reach out. And looking a little bit farther forward, May 15th is the fourth and final tax payment quarter. Reach out to the Clerk's Office for your final balances if you're not sure, and that number's 802-476-0242.
Thank you. Any question? Yes.
So if we have best spots, should we just tell you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So therein, Council, and I know, I think you had answered the email, it was either Council Stockwell or Council Spalding, sorry, I don't remember which, there was a woman who was talking about an area owned by the railroad.
That was me.
Yeah, so I have reached out to them to try to get permission so that we could, you know, dispatch folks there and try to get that area cleaned up. I haven't heard back yet, but I certainly expect to by greenup day. Yeah?
But do you think anyone would notice if we cleaned it up? Just saying.
Sure, sitting here as Mayor, you want me to tell you? Yeah, just charge right in there. Come on, Sam, don't do that to me.
Thank you for.
However, what happens under the cloak of darkness?
For granted.
Possible denial. So, no, but I, in all seriousness, I have, I can't imagine that they would say no, but I have reached out to them and just said, you know, it's a little unsightly, and constituent mentioned it, and greenup day is coming up, so I'm sure they'll give us permission if you sign a waiver.
Bern Rose has her.
Oh, Bern, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thanks, it's for Cheryl. Cheryl, if people had an absentee ballot for the March election, do they automatically get one for this May election, or was it depending upon what they signed up for? Can you make that clear if you are able?
Sure. Anybody who did request a ballot for the March election was entered into the May. I just did it for the full year. So any election during this year, they will receive the absentee ballot.
Terrific, thank you.
Anything else, Council?
Okay, I don't think we have anything under liquor or cannabis.
No.
Okay, Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of quick updates for the Council. I'll have a fuller briefing for you at the next meeting, but wanted to share briefly some progress on buyouts. We have 27 buyout properties that we've been pursuing. 21 have been awarded by FEMA, so that's really positive news. We've received, of the 21 that have been awarded, we've received nine appraisals, so FEMA has already gone through and set a price, a purchase price for those. Six have, six have been accepted and are going to closing, so that's really positive for for those people who are able to get some closure. Just a small, you know, the landslide properties have always been moving a little bit faster than other properties because the decisions were made sooner on those, so the five landslide properties received appraisals, they're five of the nine, and four of the five have accepted. So just some really good progress on that, and this is a lot of work. This is, Janet's doing it in-house, but also VEM. We signed, if you might recall, we signed early on an MOU with VEM that they would sort of manage a lot of the administrative process, so they have, and they've done a terrific job with it. Janet has some, the piece to do here at the city, but it's really lightened the load, and so it's been, it's been moving in the right direction, and it's always very, it's been very, you know, sort of a bittersweet moment signing the documents with the property, and they're very pleased about finally getting some closure on this. Elevations, you may read in Times August, good story about the elevation process. I know Montpelier is moving forward. We are really close. We've, we've contacted the finalists for elevation funding. They have, we've set a deadline of this week for them to confirm their interest, and so we expect to have approvals for your consideration at the April 22nd meeting. So hopefully we'll be getting those moving forward, and again, having some good conversations with some of the people who are ready to go on that, and we look forward to getting your okay at the next council meeting so we can really start to move forward on that project. This is sort of a, I will have more information certainly at the next meeting and hopefully online before then, but our bulky waste day is being scheduled for mid-May, so circle, I guess, the week or the calendar. We'll have a specific day, it'll be on a Saturday. We're working to make sure we, which which day is best for that in terms of availability of the dumpsters and staff, but just wanted to let you all know that that bulky waste day is scheduled, and it'll be in May, coming up in shortly next month. And then finally, I know there's some ongoing anxiety about, you know, new rounds of federal funding cuts that get announced, you know, anytime there's a new announcement, we, you know, diligently following what's happening. I'd say we've been fairly fortunate so far. You know, we, you know, most of our federal aid and grants are from the Department of Justice for Law Enforcement purposes, and, you know, probably politically, and they're not touching those really, so we're fortunate in that regard. We don't have too many other sort of operational standalone federal grants. Obviously FEMA is a big concern of ours. The BRIC, you may have all read about the BRIC cuts, that's the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program. We didn't have any active projects, so it's not, it's not sort of putting anything, it's not taking, and it's not clawing anything away from us. We had submitted a couple of scoping applications last year for, we have a water main that's, it's in a fairly vulnerable condition, and we were looking to scope out some fortifications for it, and we, so that was a scoping study for that, and then we had done a scoping study for the sedimentation program I mentioned that Bennington has. So those were the things that we had in terms of scoping studies. They weren't projects that were far along, but obviously they would, they won't be funded under BRIC, so. So again, frustrating, disappointing, obviously, because we hope to get all the applications we submit, but, you know, it would have obviously felt worse if this was clawing away something like the buyouts, right, which are much more important for us at this moment. So that is all from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Question? Yeah. Talk a little bit about the relining project and just.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they're, they're trying, they're basically on the tail end of it. They are, today they were doing some, they're setting up some bypass pumping, which led to the closure, a short segment of Brook Street through tomorrow, sometime during the day tomorrow, depending on how well they do. So they are, they are probably looking at more work on Wednesday, Thursday, and maybe one more day next week, but then we should be all, all done, so.
Maybe closed partway.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday will probably be the same thing, which is one lane on North Main, and, but other than, but it, we should, Brook Street should be back up tomorrow, yeah, during the day.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do I drop down there? And how is it working? Like, I was expecting to see digging, like, but there's no digging, it's just all happening, like, laparoscopically, if you will?
Yeah. Relined with, like a balloon.
Yeah.
That goes in sewer lining, and then they inject a, let's call it plastic, because it's easiest, it's a liquid plastic, they inject that, and then they steam it through the rubber lining, heat it, and it's like a new.
It hardens, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Next time you're in City Hall, Council, I'll show you, we have some samples in the Public Works Office of what goes into the pipe and how it looks when it's treated. It's really cool. I'll, I'm happy to show you.
Well, I saw the pipe lined up along the, but it was like an actual pipe, like, there was like something lined up, I don't know what that was, that was like all along the center line.
It's, well, there's a rubber ga, there's a pipe with a rubber gasket that goes around it, so they can, you know, slide the pipe out when they're done. You can stop by, I did. I just wanted to know. I introduced myself and said, hi, I'm the Mayor, can I try it? And they said, no, get out of here. So that was it, but it was, it's kind of cool to watch.
It's, it's really great, and I think, you know, we, I know we, when we were approving this a while back, it was, it was, it's a really great way to lengthen the life of infrastructure, and it does it at a fraction of it. It's really a great method. It avoids the digging, it avoids the, you know, all of those things that add to the cost of having to do it, so it's, you know, if we can do more of this, I think it's a great way to find, you know, we find those vulnerable spots, we can really take care of them this way. It should extend the life of that section of sewer for decades at this point, so it was, it was a great find.
I mean, it's neat, this, the only downside is you lose a little bit of pipe diameter, but if you're not, you know, the pipes generally don't run at more than 75% anyway, so it doesn't matter, but it's, yeah, it's a cool process, and like Nicholas said, really cost effective. So should we talk about some bad news?
Sure.
So Council, probably, well, you may have seen Secretary Joe Flynn was testifying, I can't recall whether it was the House or Senate, talking about transportation fund revenue, which have been pretty flat, been increasing at 2% versus transportation fund expenses, which have been increasing at 40%. You can do the math, so what does that mean? They're going to be paving less roads, the state. And so obviously, we got the word that some of our projects were potentially being pushed out, so Nicholas and I are on it, and we'll be inviting the Secretary to Berry next week, and we're going to take him on a little ride and see what we can do. You know, we're not, I mean, our job is to lobby for Berry, and I understand that, you know, these are statewide, it's a statewide impact, but our job is to lobby for Berry, and, you know, Nicholas and I both know that, you know, you push Route, you know, by 2029, 2030, Route 14 will be gravelled.
Yeah.
So we just, you know, we need to have a better solution for folks than just sending our crews out to patch potholes, and if you've driven around the city, you'll see that even the patches don't last forever. Many of them haven't lasted three or four weeks, so a little bit of bad news there, but we're on it, and we'll be reacting to it, yes.
Are you going to have him drive his car?
I try, I try really hard not to get personal, so we'll, so we'll take Karen's car. So, no, I mean, you know, listen, VTранs has been a great working partner for Berry, but we just, you know, I'm not sure what we can do, I'm not sure if we can do anything, but we're sure going to try. So, yeah, so that, like I said, that was a little bit of disappointing news. Any other questions for the Manager or Council? Okay, then why don't we move on to new business? This is item 8A on the agenda, this is a volunteer appointment to the Development Review Board, thank you very much. Michelle Farnham?
Hi.
How are you? Would you like to come up? Please. How are you? Floor is yours. Why don't you just introduce yourself, tell us a little about, a little bit about yourself and what interests you in the DRB.
So my name's Michelle Farnham. I am a relatively new resident here, moved to my law house in June of last year, and I saw the post on Front Porch Forum looking for DRB applicants. My background is, I have an undergraduate degree in environmental studies, and I have a master's in environmental law and policy from the Vermont Law School. Right now, I'm working in government relations, I'm a lobbyist at the State House. I'm reading policy and statute all the time, and we have a number of clients who I am then disseminating all the information to digesting, you know, policy on a day-to-day basis, so I figured that that skillset would be transferable to DRB, and I'm looking for ways to help the community.
Fantastic. And have you had the opportunity to watch any of the meetings or attend any of the meetings? I know they're, they're infrequent, they're monthly.
Yeah, I caught part of one, maybe back in January, but.
And you've got a, I ask this of all applicants, and you've got a pretty good idea of the time commitment that it takes to be a member of the DRB, and you're, you're sure that you can meet that time commitment?
Yeah, it's a monthly, once a month meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Per diurnix.
And some reading?
Yeah.
But you're used to that, I'm sure.
And especially, you know, when the legislature is out of session, which is typically June to January, I have a lot more clocks available in my schedule. I don't anticipate there being any major conflicts, I know I'm going out of town in September of this year, but I don't anticipate regular conflicts since it's scheduled.
Awesome. And thank you, well, thank you, first of all, thank you for stepping up. We were a little, little short on the DRB, we were right on the cusp of a quorum, and so your addition will certainly help. Council, any questions? All those, sorry, I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Couldn't come fast enough, yes.
Clarify one thing. The, I would just encourage Council to, this is kind of a little bit of a tweet, interesting situation, that there's a vacant Ward 1 seat now.
Oh, so it's a lifetime appointment.
Which is also, it technically, it's vacant now, and it technically comes up for reappearance in June, so I just would make sure that Council is clear in its motion that Michelle would be appointed effective immediately, assuming she's okay with that, and also for the four-year term beginning in June. That way it's clear that she's only has to go through this once, and she's so close to the deadline. So just a clarification there about the term length and term and appointment.
Well, she wouldn't have to, she wouldn't have to come in anyway for the reappearance, would she?
It's only to make her effective now, because otherwise, otherwise she wouldn't be able to start until July 1.
Oh, okay.
This way she can start immediate, which the quorum is important, and then she can continue, yeah.
Okay, I'm sure that was included in your motion, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
In your second? Fantastic. Any discussion? All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome to the team. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, we're at item 8B on the agenda, this is the update on the motel exits. Our, who is here from our unhoused community committee? Bunch of you, you can all come up, just grab a chair.
There's not enough for all of us, how about?
Oh, there actually is, you just need more chairs. And if you would all just mind introducing yourselves for the record, it helps our clerk.
And please make sure to pass the mic.
Kathy Partlow, I work at Downstreet Housing.
Osa Bush, I do street outreach with Good Samaritan Haven.
Beth Mueller.
Dan Barlow, People's Health and Wellness Clinic.
Floor is yours.
I actually think it'd be great if you're willing to.
Yeah.
An update on hotel exits, as you see them currently and what you're, what you're all doing.
All right. So we've seen a few exits in the past week or so, a few being in the like, 5 to 8 range from folks that are like 17 to 18 range, even though they could have stayed in, they ended up leaving, and all the way up to, I think my oldest is like 65 right now, and we're trying to find other options for him, so. Other than that, we're expecting a decent amount of folks to come out in the next few days. We've been gathering so many supplies throughout the community, has been incredible donating supplies to Good Sam, both used and new, and things that we've wanted for years, like cookstoves. And other than that, we're as ready as we can be. Camping locations are hard because of all the flooding that we had, but in the past, but we're doing, doing the best we can.
So are you keeping, do we keep sort of hard data, and when people exit, how do we track their progress? How do we?
Once they exit, or?
Yeah, once they're, once they exit, do we, do, is there a method to track their progress, to track whether they're housed, whether they're unhoused, what their situation is?
Yeah, depending on what, like, category they're in, there's basic, basic ways of tracking, so if they're staying outside, there's a decent amount of tracking that I do with, like, where they want to succeed, like, where do they want to go after being outside, or if they want to stay, and then what supports I can give them, or the community services can give them in that position. My coworker Jen, who works mostly with the hotels, has a whole tracking sheet as well, and I don't know what's on it besides, like, where they, if they are going to camp, where they're going to go roughly, and how to get ahold of me, and what supports they might need in those camping locations for all different options.
Would it be possible to share that data with the Council? Not interested in names, not interested in where they're going, just interested in the situation?
We can work on that for sure.
Okay, that would be, that would be awesome.
Can I speak quickly to the data?
Of course.
There's, there's other data that service providers in the area use, it's the Coordinated Entry System, which, if you've, you may have heard of that system, but it's a system wherein, if folks are willing, and generally if they're in service somewhere, working with, say, Good Sam in a shelter situation, or with a number of other providers, they'll be in that system, and so whether they are currently sheltered or currently unsheltered, they would be listed in that system, and generally we're then asking who might be in contact and what the current status is at our, our regional meetings, our local meetings, talking about, you know, folks in their, in the totality of that, that population, and not just for Berry necessarily. So we could probably try to pull some numbers out of that for Berry specifically, but when they exit, it's hard to know, they may not be camping, let's say, in Berry, they may be elsewhere.
Yeah. I mean, what I'd be interested in, like I said, is just the number exiting, what their current situation is, and what I'd really be interested in is when they are, when or if they are reeligible to re-enter the program. I'd be interested in knowing that as well, and the timeframes, you know, behind that, because there are some folks, literally, doesn't seem to make sense, but literally exit for a week and then they can go back. That didn't always make sense to me, but, you know, I don't, don't make the rules, but I'd just be interested, and I think the Council would be interested in, in just, you know, having better, you know, the more data we have, the better. It's just better to understand the issue.
I think we can just forward you, there's a memo that came out from OEO earlier this spring, when it sort of solidified, it may change, when legislation finally goes through this year for the July 1 timeframe, but as it currently stands, how the GA emergency housing system runs, and how folks eligibility resets and when it resets, and so that would be generic in some ways in terms of the individual, but it's generally a running, a rolling year, which is if I start using it July 1st, I have 80 days of eligibility from then until June 30th, over and above any cold weather exception timeframe, right? So we were just coming out of that, and that's what this, all this, like, are they extending, are they not, conversation has been happening recently, but that's, that's kind of how it works now, until there's a different legislative intervention, which happened just now by extending certain populations through the end of June.
And Tess, are you receiving that information as well, or would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind, make sure Tess and the Manager are copied on anything you send to the Council, that would be great. And if it's easier for you to just, you know, eat all of that information to Tess and she can get it to the Council, that, that's fine as well. Do you have a question, Counselor?
So based on the coordinated entry system, have you guys been able to identify when people will have to be out? Like, certain pe, because, you would, I mean, based on their current situation, you would have to know probably when they're going to be out, right? Like, if they have a certain amount of time, is that in the coordinated entry system? So is there a way that we can, I mean, is there a way that we're working on helping those people based on emergency needs, based on, you know, the urgency of how long it's going to be until they're out?
I think it's a fluctuating curve right now. Those who are remaining in mostly have medical needs or mental health situation needs to keep them in the hotel system, and those who still have 80 days or less left are also trying to stay in the hotel system, and I, I mean, I don't have those numbers for sure, but I know that it's, it's, seems to be fluctuating, the, the date wise, and I maybe have.
Sure.
So it's fluctuated recently because they did the extension, but they did the extension for a very set group of folks.
Right.
And so some folks had to leave, and some folks will still be having to leave pretty, you know, probably pretty soon, like, over the next few weeks. And, and so if you're not categorically eligible according to economic services right now, or the governor's statements, so if you're not categorically eligible, then you are using out the remainder of the 80 days that you had allotted to you if you're still in there.
Right.
And individually, households have the ability to just call and find out how many days they have left in their 80 days, but as, say, a service provider or something, we can't necessarily call and say, tell me how many people have six days, tell me how many people have one day.
Got it.
So it really is hard unless you're directly working with someone to, to know exactly So it really is hard unless you're directly working with someone to, to know exactly, you can assist them with making the call, you can have all that information. I do think that our, our lead agency in this area is Capstone, and they do have a little bit more in terms of generalized numbers as to who might, how many might have to leave at a particular time. And that, again, that fluctuates on the daily at this point.
Counselor Stockwell?
Of the people that you know of locally who are unhoused, how are they doing? Do you have enough, are there enough materials to keep people safe, warm?
Yeah, with, we've had the recent cold snap. We had a lot of, a lot this time of year, a lot of snow today. I am going to be going to at least three or four campsites, mostly in the Berlin area, but two of them will be in this area, just making sure that folks are warm enough. Right now propane has been a pretty big ask, just, and that's just the little green canisters of propane. Folks use buddy heaters, which are safe to use in your tent setup, and a small can of propane will last five hours. And we'll do a decent job heating if you insulated really well, but otherwise, it's, it's barely warm enough in there anyways. More sleeping bags wouldn't hurt. We didn't, we didn't get a ton of those with donations. And like lightly used or new blankets of any type are really great, as well as tarps, just for keeping in that extra little bit of warmth. But folks are, folks are pulling through or asking for supports of how to best keep their tent spaces warm. So it's, folks are doing the best that they can out there.
Thank you.
And I'll get you in a minute, Bern. But if folks want to drop those items off somewhere, where can they, where can they bring them?
Oh, yeah, of course. So that's, yeah.
It's like a hot potato.
Yes, it is. That's 1571 Route US 302, technically in Berlin, but if you were going to mail, it would be Barry. That's the Welcome Center. And you go up to the upper office building. It's gray, and you can drop stuff next to the door up there, and staff will bring it inside, or if someone's there, bring one inside.
And if they're not, you can just leave it?
Yep. And no one's going to take it. Things are.
Perfect. Bern, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you. I want to say hi to Osa. Hi, Osa. I have a question about where people go. I, you know, we talk about people just camping out someplace, and, and I know two or three spots where somebody might pitch a tent. But I'm wondering, and this is something for us as a city to think about, and Osa, for you also knowing the people that, that you're helping, is, would it be possible for us to find, to make some designated place, and build just something like a simple tent platforms that would keep people off the ground? And would people be able or willing to have small groups, two or three campers together for protecting each other and for group safety? Because when people are out in tents, I don't think they have any place to, to keep any of their belongings. They're always at risk. Other people come and steal their things or wreck their campsite. So how do we keep this, people who are just in that kind of situation more safe anyhow? So thank you, and I'll be seeing you tomorrow. I have stuff to drop off again.
Erica Reel?
Just to tag on to what Osa was saying, Capstone also has supplies as well, and can also be a drop-off and donation site for folks. We have very few supplies, but we're welcome to take things in and donate as well. Osa and I work very well together, and we communicate daily. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to circle back, if I could, about something you had said. The information is not necess, the information into who will be exiting in the future, say, you know, sort of a two-week window, is not available to you. And honestly, I don't understand why. And so I'd be happy to help in that regard if I could. You know, and again, when I ask you folks for something, I don't want names. I don't want to know where they're going. You know, the reason why that information would be helpful is because if you see a curve where all of a sudden there are 12 people exiting in a two-day period, well, it helps you plan a little bit in terms of what do we have for supplies? What do we have for human resources, for people, to meet with people and help? So if you want to just send me an email, let me know who you've been talking to, I'll see what I can do and see if I can get you, you know, I think it's useful information to have. We don't need to know who. We don't need to know where. We, we just need to know what to anticipate potentially. So I'd be happy to help in that regard if I could. You're welcome. Any other questions, Council? Yes.
I guess I liked Bern's idea, and I guess my, my question is, you know, I mean, I think we have more immediate needs, but then I think there's longer-term needs. And my question, beyond building affordable housing, which seems like the elephant in the room, like obviously if we had more housing, we wouldn't have so many unhoused people. But how do, what can we do as a city? I mean, I, I think, you know, asking for these things is wonderful, but what can we do as a city, recognizing we have no money? What can we do as a city to help these members of our community? What can we do?
I mean, what, what Bern's asking is an absolute dream. I wish we had spaces that folks could camp and not get, or have the option of being removed from those spaces. There are some incredible projects that are happening in, in Quebec with single, single space, enclosed, like basically tiny trailers that have quite literally everything in them, shower, bathroom, electricity. But of course, that's a dream, you know? Those things take time. Space takes time. But yeah, just having, even just having a space that folks could go to that wouldn't necessarily be monitored, but would have someone going to it quite often, and perhaps would have roles around it, and would have access to trash removal, would be, I mean, that would be incredible. That's, that's my biggest thing, or thoughts, yeah.
Counselor Stockwell?
The platforms also seem to me like an excellent idea for people who are camping. It's spring, it's going to be wet. Toilets, someone there, and some platforms. That doesn't seem like, to me like that should be impossible somewhere in central Vermont. Or outrageously expensive.
Just wanted to briefly address the healthcare needs of this population. It's about three weeks ago, we had a string of no-shows at the clinic, and we realized it was all folks who were in the hotel program who were scrambling last minute to find a place to live. One of the benefits of having people housed is that we can bring medical staff directly to them to provide care. The hotels offered us private rooms, running water, electricity, privacy, internet access. We have none of those things if we go out to a camp, which makes bringing medical care to these folks very, very challenging. We either have to expect them to come to our clinic, which is, for, for many people, there's a transportation gap there as well, or continue to bring services over to Good Sam and other partners as well, which we'll continue doing. But with the continued withdrawal of the hotel program, this really makes our work much more challenging. You know, many of the people we've been treating, these are folks with cancer, with chronic healthcare problems, people who need oxygen to breathe, or need to put insulin in a refrigerator. And we are really concerned. We're tracking now what the impact of suddenly no longer having a home will mean on these chronic healthcare conditions that we have at least been able to stabilize in some of the patients.
Is there anyone meeting those criteria who is currently unhoused?
I thought, I thought that was, yeah, that's a great question, because I thought folks with chronic healthcare conditions were extended through June.
Not necessarily. If you read the executive order, sorry.
No, please take it, please. If you read the executive order, yes, to some extent, that's true. But it was very clearly laid out in the executive order who definitely qualified, and it was, you know, basically needing electricity, like needing it for oxygen, or, or having a, having cancer was called out in it. So there were a number of things that were called out in it. But there were things that were questionable for folks. Someone, let's say, someone who has dementia, who maybe doesn't have other conditions, but who left to being completely unsheltered would have, you know, very little chance of long-term survival, let's say, and yet didn't meet the criteria in the executive order, so needed to jump potentially, unless they had other underlying conditions that qualified them, they have to like jump through extra hoops to get that, that extension. So some of those folks were extended very temporarily until they could get some doctor's input and, and given into the state. And other folks, I think, have been kind of left out based on the fact that there were some very specific conditions, and it wasn't just, like it is in the fall generally for cold weather exception, which is that you have a disability, unidentified disability. It was carved out from there to certain folks who have an identified disability.
Well, and in any case, in less than two months, that's going to come to an end, and we're going to be in the same situation with people that are very, very vulnerable. So I've got a, just a quick question for you, since we really, you know, we're your committee, and we're definitely partnered with you. I've been in close contact with Teddy about the legislation that's, that's moving through the legislature now, and I'm wondering if you have any input from your end? Have you been able to communicate with, with the powers that be and try and put any pressure on at all?
Do we, well, in terms of the legislature, in terms of the administration? I mean, we have conversations, and when you talk about pressure, we pressure everyone for a solution. I don't know that this bill is necessarily the solution, but we, you know, that's the question that I, we all focus on, well, how evil he is because he's terminating the program, and this day, oh, now it's extended. And my question is, okay, well, let's assume the world is perfect, and the governor agrees, what happens on June 1? You know, so why are we fighting? Why are we, it seems silly to be fighting about this when we should be focusing on, so that's really where the focus of my conversations is, Mayor, the focus of my conversation has been, but what's the long-term goal? And what happens on June 1? Because any solution that I see ends on June 1. And so that's really what I've been advocating for. And I understand this, this is a hard, hard problem. We don't have, if we had the money to fix it, we'd fix it. We don't have the money. But we have to, you know, in my opinion, we need to dig a little deeper. And the frustrating thing about every conversation is, I know darn well that we're not going to be able to help everybody. I know that. You know, so it's, yeah, it's, it's a frustrating problem, and I appreciate, I don't know how you do the work you do, because it's hard work. And, you know, and I get it, these are real people we're talking about, but, you know, we can't print money. And so I, I don't know, honestly, that's, my focus is always on the long-term solution. I don't know what that is right now. Anyone else? Yes.
I mean, I guess I would say partially in response to that, which is that we had a legislative update from our two state representatives two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And we did discuss, you know, when we set legislative priorities as a council before the session began, finding solutions to help our unhoused neighbors was one of, one of our biggest priorities, and what we asked both the lobbyists the city was hiring and our, at that time, representatives-elect to work on. And so we did have a legislative update two weeks ago, and had a, had a robust conversation about extending housing for folks. I think we have a split delegation on whether that was a priority. As, you know, in meeting records reflect, that Representative Wazak said that that was a priority for him, and Representative Booton said he would vote with the administration on ending housing for the, the groups that you described until July 1. So we're a little bit betwixt and between. I think that is, I think we've made, we've all made clear that, that we need more support at a municipal level. It also came up in that conversation that the, the offer of funding at the municipal level was inadequate, and not a substitute for a fully-supported program, and was not going to actually help the city, help you, and the work that you are all doing. So that was not a good solution. But I think that we are all also having those conversations and trying to, trying to move things forward. Clearly not enough, unfortunately.
So, you know, housing in general is a hard conversation, and, and not just for folks who are unhoused. I mean, just building housing, period. You know, the cost of it is horrifying. Still can't figure out what effect the tariffs are going to have on the cost of building. I don't think it's short-term. It's not going to be, I mean, I can do math. It's not going to be good short-term. It's frustrating, you know, because, you know, you know and I know, I can't fix every problem. Some days I go home and I feel good because, okay, I helped, you know, him, or I helped her. But I know there's so many other people, you know, who need to be helped. And all we can do is keep taking the hits and keep moving forward. I mean, that's all we can do. Yes.
I guess when you, when you were talking, it made me think about, I guess a longer-term concern that I have is that, you know, potentially heading into very difficult times, we may have even more people who are unhoused. It may not be an issue of housing anymore. It may just be an issue of people not being able to afford to be housed. And that's, well, no, but I'm saying, like, right now, there are people who maybe just because of the situation of maybe losing their job, or some medical debt, or, you know, I think about, the thing that I've been seeing a lot is people who are on the verge of retiring and have no money left in their 401K. And, you know, we're, we're talking about people who are, you know, there are a lot of people who are going to be right on the edge and then be, not be able to afford to stay in a home. So that's concerning as well.
Well, thank you. Tess, yes?
I was just wondering if I could speak to a little bit, to what's happening now in terms of things being done.
Sure.
And thank you to this incredible committee.
Thank you all.
Yes.
So one of the things is, you know, the council gave $6,000 to have a staff for a warming center. And, you know, it's, went smoothly with a lot of good volunteers from our local churches and others. It'll be coming to a close as it is on April 19. And so that's something that actually people that are doing the work, you know, felt they'd like to extend it because of all this that's happening, and that there just might be a nice place to go. So we're thinking of shortening hours to eight to 10 instead of seven to 10, Monday through Friday. So it'll be a place for people to go, get a cup of coffee, and hopefully we'll have more. We do have some service providers come down, and just more of that, so that that's helpful. Also, I want to commend the committee for deciding to do something that everybody always talks about, how do we find out about services for people? How do people find out about services for themselves? And there is, Washington County Mental Health has a person there that does a great job of compiling that information. It changes a lot, so we try to encourage anybody to give new information if they see anything, or if something has changed in their organizations. So it's pretty comprehensive. And Thank you, Beth Mueller. Beth Mueller put together a QR code, so that it's not just finding that piece of paper that, that keeps getting lost or needs updating as soon as it's printed. And so it's being electronically updated all the time. But these QR codes, and I'm going to give some to you. Take a few, and there's stickers to put them up.
Thanks.
This is a wonderful resource. That's just a little bit helpful. Another thing is, the council put in the budget for two portable toilets, portolets, I call them. And one has been up for at least a good six months next to the Methodist Church, Heading Church, and it's kind of in between that church and the Housing Authority. And, and I keep checking in with And I keep checking in with Pastor Ray and she said she has heard of no incidents. That would be a negative incidence. And we haven't heard anything from the company that does clean them every week. So that seems to be very positive. And we've just, I just ordered the second one to be put in the parking lot of Enterprise Alley by the bike path. So it's by the little utility building. I don't know which.
The extraction shed, yeah.
Yeah, the extraction shed. So it's going to go there. So people will know that this is for everyone to have a place to go when there's no place else to go in the city. And so I'm really happy about that. So, you know, I can give a bigger report at some other time, but I just wanted to give you a little indication of some of the things that have been happening.
Counselor Chalkwell?
Do you think it's possible that Berlin, Montpelier, and Berry could talk about sponsoring some platforms in places that are safe to camp in with toilet facilities and with someone, a shared staff person, part-time maybe? I think that Counselor Spalding is so right, that we're at the beginning of another crest of people who are going to be homeless. And really, we need, it's so inhumane to not do something that we can do.
Yeah. We did have, this committee here, the Unhoused Community Committee, did have a joint meeting with the Montpelier Unhoused Community. There's the homelessness task force. So they did have a joint meeting, which I think is a good start for having the cross-talk between the two communities. And I would have to identify who in Berlin would be willing to step up and have that conversation as well. But I'm happy to start a conversation. Sure.
Thank you.
Yes?
I would also agree that the warming shelter, it would be great to continue. I think it's been a really good spot of community. Do you need additional funding to make that happen?
We would probably need some additional funding. I will say that we've had some unsolicited donations from people that we didn't expect. So it's been able to go a little bit beyond and help pay for some of the other supplies, things that we need. I do have a, one of the companies, somebody, a representative from a company came down, brought stuff down, gave us a check and said that that company, I don't want to say who it is yet. But she said, you know, we could do a day, you know, of, you know, just a work day with our employees. We do that. And so I think it'd be really nice to spruce it up. But the biggest thing we need that we're going to run into, if we're going to use that space also for an emergency shelter for really extreme weather, is a sprinkler system. So we're trying to figure out what, you know, how that could happen if it's the will of the congregation to want to continue doing it. And it seems that way. And it's a familiar and comfortable space for a lot of people with lots of different needs. They're not just homeless. They're, you know, there's just other people that, you know, it just provides a little respite in an otherwise difficult life. So, yeah, but a sprinkler system would be nice.
Erica Reel?
I can tell you that Montpelier has already put like portolets in their more auspicious sites like Hubbard Park because they knew that people were camping already up there. So that was one of their first places to put portolets. Thank you.
Yeah. The reason why we put the portolets where that was decided was we actually, OSA's colleague, Dawn Little, she talked to people and said, where would you like to have it? You know, if you were to have a place, you know, in the city, wherever. And they identified these two areas of just each end of town. So.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tess. And thank you, folks. Make sure you get me that email if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay, put it on me.
Thank you all.
Okay, counsel, we'll move on to item 8C on the agenda. This is to approve the fiscal year '26 budget. Mr. Manager, so you.
Thank you, Mayor. So just have a brief set of slides that I'm pulling up now. And Dawn is here to join me if we get any questions. So just a summary, this hasn't changed too much since the last council meeting where we talked about changes. These are just the major changes that have happened since the process, the deliberative process started. So we've increased the Aldrich Library's budget amount to their requested amount, which was an increase of $16,980. The Berry Partnership's requested amount was also funded and that was a net increase of $2,100. We decreased BADC to last year's amount, so they'd be flat funded to seven, so that was a decrease of $7,029. We, I'm going to skip the next bullet and come back to it. We restored just about all of the cemetery seasonal staff, all but, was that, all but one position, right, Dawn? Yeah. So that was a net increase back into the budget of $50,000. We restored year-round use of the Berry Town Yardway site at $10,000. And then we also added the voter-approved request for the Granite Museum, which was approved by the council in an amount of $15,000. And then that middle, the second red bullet there, we returned excess fund balance to lower the tax rate. So as we talked about at the last council meeting, with FEMA payments coming in, that was basically replenishing fund balance that we had used to pay upfront for those FEMA projects. So that is basically coming back in to replace that fund balance that was lost. We were $84,730 above the 5% threshold. So we are recommending to use that, that excess fund balance to lower the tax rate next year.
So just jumping in on that for a minute, Dawn, you can't go off the, if you try to do that math, you can't go straight off the audit report, can you?
Yes, you could.
You could? Because I was, because when I was reading the audit report, and it's not a gotcha moment, so don't worry. I just want to make sure we're on the right side of charter. That calculates our general fund balance as of June 30th, 2024. So you're projecting forward from that to '25 for the anticipated, which, of course, we won't necessarily get the audit results on that for quite a while yet. Would you feel pretty good about the math?
I did 5% on the '25 budget as our cap, which is $700 change.
Yep.
And then we had $800 and something. That's not condensated, so I can't make the difference.
Gotcha, okay.
Next slide. So this is just sort of a look back, how we started. It was looking pretty bleak. We had about a, we had an over $1 million deficit. And that was really primarily, not primarily, overwhelmingly due to the loss of $1 million in state operating aid. So that would have resulted in a 10.77 projected tax rate increase if nothing had changed. The, not only, you know, not only that, but the indicators, you know, were difficult. We faced, you know, a difficult financial picture. And these are things like our contractual wage increases, which go up 5%. The healthcare rate increases go up double digits again. This year was 18%. Our fund balance had been depleted. That's now, we're now in better shape with that. Obviously, the grand list value is in, it's tenuous until we get some finality about with the flood damage. And the loss of state operational aid was the big hit, was the million-dollar loss. So it was, you know, it was looking difficult and the conditions, the baseline conditions were tough as we headed into the budget process. And so how's it, that's how it started. Now, how it's going is, I think we landed at a good product. We found just shy of $400,000 of property tax relief. And that's in the form of savings identified in the budget and new non-tax revenue. So every time we find a non-tax dollar, that provides some relief to our taxpayers and the tax rate. So there's just some examples of both of those. We eliminated next year's bulky waste event, right? So the one that I mentioned in the manager report is the one that's funded in the current year. Next year, that's eliminated. We eliminated an associate planner position, which we have struggled for years to find. And it's not only been through different managers, it's been through different HR administrators. Like that position is just, it is really difficult to hire it. And I think we all probably can guess why, which is that it's, the rate is just too low and I don't think we can afford to go higher at this point. A lot of fuel savings recognized this year across all departments. And then we have done our, you know, as I said, we go line by line. You know, Councilor Bergeron has had the pleasure of sitting through this with us, so he knows. We really do go line by line and we find reductions everywhere. Like if the supply budget is slightly down, we take it down. So that was, that amounted to $321,000 of cost savings. And then the new tax revenue, non-tax revenue of $75,000 is listed there. You can see the FY '26 proposed amounts and the change. The big one here, we got some projected higher state highway aid is a big one. And of course, the Cozy Trust interest, which I think I grabbed the wrong column there. That might be the wrong column of numbers that I may have grabbed. But anyway, we have a lot of, we have a lot of new non-tax revenue that we identified that provides relief to the tax rate. So where does that leave us overall? We are looking at a general fund budget of $14,871,20, which is, it's essentially a flat budget is what you're looking at. Because last year's expense budget was, expenses were $14,873,781. So that's a reduction year to year in expenses, which is, you know, if you look back to the conditions that we started at, fairly miraculous to do that. And that resulted in a projected tax rate increase of 5.87%, which is under the target set by the council of 6%. So I think we're right where we should be, based on, I think, what we all, I think jointly think the taxpayers may support. So that's really, that's really it. We haven't had any major changes or updates since we briefed you two weeks ago. We've been feeling really, we haven't seen, Dawn and I haven't seen anything in our, in the data in the two weeks since to change any projections. We feel very, you know, comfortable with the numbers we've brought to you. So we're happy to answer any questions and otherwise, there's a suggested motion on the last slide.
Thank you. Don't mind me, I'm just doing the math. No, and I recall, Carol remembers that year where we came within 10 seconds of tanking the city's finances because we hadn't done the math correctly. We corrected it, we didn't do it, but it's really a tie. Yes?
I'm just going to stick my foot in my mouth, but I'm feeling really uncomfortable about BADC. You know, we've kind of got it hanging out in the air right now of if they find a, an executive director, I don't know how the progress is on that. I'm just putting that out there, that I'm feeling really uncomfortable.
I mean, I can speak to that a bit. I made clear to them that as far as I'm concerned, I mean, we vote as a council, but as far as I'm concerned, we would put the money in the budget. We would not, absent them hiring an executive director come July 1st, the money would be there waiting for them. But if they didn't have an executive director, they would not be getting that appropriation, that they needed to find an executive director. My understanding is that they actually have an offer pending. I know who the candidate is, I'm not at liberty to say, but I'm very pleased with their progress. I think they are working hard on it. And the thing we have to remember is that whether it's BADC or a different model, I mean, I think we'd all agree that we have to have economic development and community development on some level. And as we're going to see, let's try to put a junior planner back in the budget next year. Won't happen. So if we take that, you know, so I've really tried to walk the right line here and compromise. But what I'm not willing to give up is those community and economic development dollars out of the budget, because I'm smart enough to know we'll never get them back in if we take them out. So that's my position on, you know, where that stands in our relationship with BADC. I still see value in the organization, but put it frankly, they got to step up their game a little bit. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I can add to that. I think the, yeah, the very important thing is that, you know, I know there's been disagreement on council about the future of BADC even predating this budget. But I think everything I've ever heard from this council and the last council was not that the function would be eliminated, just about whether BADC would doing it. So I, one of the things we did in our budget now is the budget line is not specific to BADC. It's specific to community and economic development. So, yeah, so I think it's, I agree with you. I think that there's a lot of shortcomings they have to answer for and I think they're aware of that. But I think it would be, I don't think it's wise to eliminate the function from the budget. Because as the mayor said, then you're climbing a big hill to get it back in in the future, yeah.
Counselor Augustine?
Something different, if we want to continue. It's on something different if we want to consider this conversation, continue this conversation. I'm just looking, there were hands over there.
Was that relevant to the economic vote? Yes?
So I agree with Counselor Chambel and I recognize the importance of economic development. And at the same time, I guess, I think my biggest concern with the Berry Partnership and the BADC is that we're giving them a large chunk of their operating budget and we're basically funding a nonprofit and we're just saying, here, go do good work for us. And we don't really get to, we don't get a lot back. And I'm not saying get a lot back in return, like return on investment, but like when we ask for information, it feels like it's like really hard to get information. And it, you know, when we ask Dawn to come in, Dawn gives us all the, you know, answers all our questions. And when we ask someone else to come in, they answer all our questions. And when we give this much money to organizations and it feels like it's this adversarial thing, but we're giving you all this money, that's the frustrating thing for me. And so part of me wonders, are these organizations sustainable the way that they are? When they're, when they're, when they continue to have increases? And does it make more sense for us to pull these kinds of things in-house? I'm not saying get rid of economic development. I'm saying pull them into our city budget where we then have oversight over our own economic development. And we don't have to discuss that now. I'm just saying, is that something we should think about as we move forward?
I think in terms of the BADC function, I think that's a fair discussion to have. And I think frankly, we should have it with the town. I think both, you know, both the city and the town fund BADC. I know that, you know, the town funds the partnership at a much lower level, but BADC is almost, I think at this point, entirely 50% funded by both. So I actually think that there may be value in having a, you know, maybe even a joint meeting with the select board on this topic. Because I think both governments are grappling with this subject. In terms of, you know, in terms of bringing it in-house, I don't think, you know, if we were to bring in a function like the partnership in-house, it would cost way more than the $70,000 that we pay for it now. It would be, it would be the salary plus benefits plus all the advertising. I know the partnership right now, Tracy does a really good job of coming up with some of her own revenue from some of the events she puts on, like the craft fair has a fair amount of revenue for the organization. I know she gets a state grant that we help provide a letter of support for. So I think that from a purely financial standpoint, the partnership definitely would be a huge increase in cost to bring in-house. So I think it's, I think it's genuinely a bargain the way it is right now. BADC, that may also not be enough money to bring that function in-house. It could be something that's done maybe on a part-time basis perhaps, and that might be enough funding to do it. But if we were to do it as a full-time in-house position, which again, I think that's a fair discussion to have, it would be way more than the $60,000 that we fund now. Not saying that we shouldn't have that talk, but I think that the financial implications are significant and we shouldn't assume that we can do it for what's in there now, certainly with the partnership. I think that one is very clear that bringing that in-house would be definitely way above $72,000 a year.
Yes.
I would also like to have that discussion about BADC. One of the things that worried me in their budget was no business contributed to them. So if they were really valuable to the business community, like I contribute what little money I have to the things that I value. So I was really disappointed that they didn't have any contributions. any contributions. But, and that's all.
I mean, that is a, with regard to the partnership, that is a much, much bigger conversation than the partnership. That is our designation, our downtown designation, as a designated downtown. So that controls our access to grants, that controls our access to downtown tax credits. You know, there's a lot more at risk, and I'm not even sure if a municipality can. I suspect they can, but I don't know the answer to that question, whether a municipality can even do that, whether you can have a designated downtown organization within a municipality. I think it may have to be a separate nonprofit, so I'd have to check into that. I don't know the answer to that question, I don't think anyone here does. So these are all much bigger questions. What I do know is that sometimes we don't tell them what we want. So, you know, a good manager manages people and lets them know what their expectations are, and we haven't really done that. I mean, Don knows what I'm gonna ask her about, because, you know, I mean, she's good at what she does, and, and she knows when I talk about the fund balance, her and I speak the same language, and she knows exactly how to answer my question. But when we don't always ask the right questions, and we don't say, well, okay, Tracy, this is what we want from you, it's just, you know, honestly, sometimes it feels like a little bit of a hit job. And, you know, what I like to do is manage people, let them know what my expectations are. I absolutely agree with the manager, you couldn't, you couldn't run a downtown organization, you couldn't run that organization for $70,000, and I don't think we could run an organization like BADC and see a meaningful, you know, meaningful economic development, and we have seen that from BADC. You know, they have their shortcomings currently, and, you know, I've had some very frank conversations with the folks on their board and let them know what I expect, and I think they've responded to that. You know, I know that they've interviewed three candidates, and like I said, I think they, and you know who the candidate is as well, and, yeah. So I, I think if they can get past what was obviously, I mean, I wasn't pleased with the presentation that they gave in the council chambers. I don't like it at all, and I'm just gonna be honest. When someone looks at a counselor and says, well, I've been too busy to get the answer to that question, not what I'm expecting from folks, you know, we're all busy. But I also am not willing to kill off the concept because of poor performance. I'd like to give people the opportunity to do better, so.
Still a different thing.
Oh, go for it. Yeah, we need a totally different thing.
All right, so we're moved on from that. Okay. I will start by saying I appreciate the work that Nicholas and Don have done on this budget. I think the hard work has shown through the series of presentations we've seen over the last couple of weeks, and all the department heads coming in, and it's been very, very clear to me that there's been a deeply thoughtful approach to this process. And so thank you both and everyone who has presented before us for, for doing that, I really appreciate that. At the very beginning of the slide, we saw that we had agreed as a council to, to give the Aldrich Library their budget request. Our colleagues in Berry Town did not, and the, that, my understanding is that left about a $20,000 budget gap between what they were hoping for. I saw on Front Porch Forum that they are running a fundraiser right now, that there has been a match proposed of $10,000, if they are able to raise $10,000 by this Friday. So-
Which they met this afternoon.
Well, all right then, okay, well, you steal my thunder. I was gonna pitch something, and I was going to say we could offer to close the match if they need it, but that is phenomenal news, that they have met that match as well. Great.
Awesome.
I will, I withdraw my potential motion then.
Well, we can still, you can still do it, it's a generous offer, it just won't-
It just won't, it just won't get us there. That's fine. I am glad that they, they have met that funding gap, and I am, I'm disappointed that Berry Town doesn't see the value that, that we do in the library. I'll say that.
Yes.
I think Councilor-
Sorry, Councilor Deering.
Were we able to discuss the $2,000 for youth first mentoring?
Is she here?
I don't, I don't see her.
I don't care about coming and speaking, but-
I'm, is she, do you, do you know her personally?
Kind of, I mean, we talked a bit at the school.
Well, no, I didn't know if you had contact information.
I would absolutely like to advocate to get that put on in any way, shape, or form that I can, if that means a motion or have my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that, for the purpose of discussion?
Are we able to do it without an official petition?
We can.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, this would be like placing, similar to placing the granite museum on the ballot.
However, we would have to ratify because technically it wasn't on the agenda, so you'd, you'd get to see it twice, and I'm gonna look to Carol and Cheryl, because I know rules get really sticky with warnings, and did you have enough days, and, you know, does it matter that it wasn't technically on the agenda? Carol and Cheryl, can we, because I, I've just never been here before, where I probably have in 12 years, I just can't remember.
You would approve it on the warning, it would get printed on the budget, on the ballot, if for some reason, two weeks from now, you didn't ratify it, you'd be stuck with it on the ballot.
Okay. No, 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 but, but we can do it, like we don't, because, you know, the 30, the warning is really strict about, you know, put it in the paper, do your thing, and I just want to make sure that we're not stepping outside the lines here. No, I, I, you know, I mean, 2000, we have the conversations about kids who grow up without a mentor, and, you know, and we're having $70,000 conversations in 20, in 60, and this is $2,000 to start a program for youth mentoring? I'm, I'm all over that, I'll support that. So that, you made a motion, you made a second. Is there any discussion regarding the youth mentoring program specifically? Hearing none, all those in favor of placing that on the warning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, so let's-
I have one more budget question.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Ask all you want.
This is a question for Don and the city manager. I just want to make sure that we can continue to do portalets, that there's enough money squeezed room that we could continue to do the warming shelter, and that if it's ever possible, that we can contribute to some sort of platform building, that the city would have funds for that. We could squeak them out somewhere.
We have the warming shelter, I think-
Moved it to the AHS grant.
That's right, so it's in, it's-
It's on our own budget, but it's covered under the grant.
Yes, Tessa's grant was extended for, through, into next fiscal year, so we have funding in there to do that. And I think the portables were paid out of that, could be paid out of that grant as well. You know, the platforms, I don't know how much they would cost, I don't know where they would be, so I can't, it's the first I'd heard of it tonight, so I can't say that we have or don't have money for it. You know, we'd have to, we'd have, we'd have to work really closely with other communities, I think, to make that possible, because it would be certainly too big of a, it, it wouldn't be a site that we would probably feel comfortable having without some sort of staffing on there. So I think it would definitely have to be either working with the volunteers, who are probably a bit too stretched out now, or other communities to do something of that effect.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, facilities are important as well.
Yes.
You know, running water.
Yeah.
If you're going to have a site where people are camping on a-
Right.
Extended basis, and it would absolutely have to be on city property.
Yes, absolutely it would.
Otherwise, we don't have jurisdiction, so.
Right, correct.
So willing to have the conversation, but I think it's a, we're gonna have to get a few more folks in here to talk to us about it.
I agree. If we're able, and I'm fully in support of this conversation as well, if we're able to land that conversation, I think this would be a good use of special project funding, money not necessarily general operating budget, because we don't have any of the numbers. So if we arrived at a project, I think we could approve it as a council later.
So are we, so I think as far, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
One more comment, which is, I, I also appreciate all the time and energy, and I specifically appreciate the time that Don and the city manager took to go over my questions. We sat for an hour, and it was very helpful. The one thing that I will say, well, two things I will say. One, I continue to be disappointed that we don't have a rec director, and that our rec program is slowly dying, let's say. And the next thing I would like to say is, after that conversation, I would like to suggest that as we move forward, we start looking, we start trying to figure out how we can budget more forward. That was the manager's suggestion. Instead of always looking back and then trying to like just squeeze ourselves into this tiny box, how can we invest in our community? How can we invest in the things that are important to us? How can we grow? What, what do we see as future needs, and how can we plan for those, just like you do at home? You know, you know you're gonna need a new roof in two years, and you plan for it, or whatever the case might be. So I just would ask that we start moving towards that instead of being very reactive. Thank you.
Okay, so do we need, I believe we do need some separate motions.
There was a suggested specific motion on the slide.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta pull up, push your-
The slide up?
Or I can pass it down to you if you want to make the motion.
I can make it.
There you go.
I've got it right here. So I'll make a motion to approve the general fund budget of $14,800,120, of which an amount not to exceed $10,762,686 is to be raised by local property taxes for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, a quick question for you, paving fund, that is a separate article.
Capital.
Yeah, that's in capital.
And that's a separate article.
And that's a separate article, okay, so just wanted, I knew the answer, but I wanted to make sure before it. Okay, so council, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Don, very much.
Wait, wait, wait a second.
You get one ticket.
Thank you. That was outstanding work.
Thank you.
Speech.
At the time.
Speech.
Okay, so where do we want to go next? Do you want to go to the potential charter changes?
Yes, the, we have to open the first hearing for charter changes, yes.
Optimistic time.
Okay, so let the minutes reflect that we have opened the first hearing on the potential charter changes. Council, these were all in your packet, and then you, well, they're in your packet, and then you received an update.
Yes, and I will have the update up here, mayor, for people to see as well.
Yep, take your time. Okay.
There we go.
Okay, can we do the gimme first? And I'll give a, give you a manager's choice. On 601, section B?
Yes.
Would you rather go 8.33% or 10%? I look at the language there, and I just worry, even when I read it, I mean, and I do math for a living, 5% is really easy to understand. Prior to 5%, it was actually 0%.
Yeah.
We had to give all the money back. And then the voters gave us a little, you know, I mean, as a CPA, what I recommend to my clients is a lot more than 8.33%, a lot more than, we recommend generally in business that you have at least three months in your savings account, which would be about 25% of our annual expenditures. So I'm just saying to the manager, would you, would you have an issue with changing the one month's worth, you know, one divided by 12 to 8.33%? I think it's easier to, for folks to understand.
I think that's fine.
And if you want to change it to 10%, you know, I think in terms of the performance of the city, potholes aside, I think that, I don't think that folks would have an issue going for 10, you know, percent, so, sorry to spring it on you, but-
I, I think we're, we're probably comfortable with either, Don, I, both are an improvement over, over today's, yeah.
I was, my suggestion was doing the 1/12 to make it clear, just taking the budget divided by 12, but 10% is good, I'm fine with that.
Well, or we could just do eight point, I suggested not, I would suggest not doing the 1/12, because folks, you know, and like I said, I do math for a living, and even I had to stop and say, okay, 1 divided by 12, okay, that's 8.33, it's a little bit more, which I was okay with, but I was thinking, are they asking for more, are they asking for less? Because one's a, you know, one's a fraction, one's a, one's a number.
First of all, I think 10% neatly avoids this whole problem, and I'm in favor of that. The less math I have to do, the better. Purely technical, like thing that just occurred to me as we say this, once we increase the fund balance on hand from 5 to 10%, does that mean we have a coupley here as ahead of us of not having excess fund balance in the same way that we did this year that goes back in the, okay.
Probably, well- No, you, you have authority-
Right.
To keep 10%. If Don and Nicholas recommended to the council, burn up all your fund balance and put $400,000 towards taxes-
Right.
I wouldn't recommend that-
I understand, okay, thank you.
Because that would leave us with no savings account, but they can, they're, the 10% is a maximum, so if they-
So it's a ceiling, not a floor.
Correct.
If they had 15, they would have to give one-third of that money back.
Got it, got it, got it, thank you.
So is everyone okay with voting it with 10%?
Yeah.
You okay with that? It's a little bit of a, we'll have to sell it a little bit, but I think, you know, I think when you explain it to folks in very simple terms, that means if you look across the entire city, the amount we can have in a savings account is $1.4 million, and we have a $14 million budget annually. And, let's see, the flood, what was the cost on that, Don, in 2023? $10 million, $10 million and climbing?
Just the city's portion was 3.2.
3.2. So roughly, roughly three times that amount, or at least double that amount. So might be a good idea for us to have a little bit, little bit more in reserve, again, doesn't mean we have to. Okay, so we'll put 10% there. All right, anyone else want to talk about any other potential charter changes? Of course you do, Ms. Oz, come on up.
It's so fun to come play with you all. Harold Oz, a former Berry City clerk and treasurer for 16 years, and I do want to continue to express my concerns with regards to the charter change that would change the clerk position from elected to appointed. I've made my arguments in the past. I think it's important that the position continue to be elected. It's an independent position, I think it's important that the person who is in charge of elections, who is the chief election official for the city, is not under the supervision of the other elected officials in the city. I think that that's an important distinction to make. As I mentioned the last time I was here, I think it's important that the clerk, an elected clerk who essentially works for the voters of the city of Berry, is the representative to the administration. They are the bridge between the voters and the administration, and I think that that's an important relationship to maintain as an independent one.
I played that chord.
Getting, I think it's just a mute.
And the other thing is, I, I've heard a couple times people talk about how it would solve a problem that has never existed in the history of Berry City, and to try to put something in place for a hypothetical doesn't seem like the right way to go. If a position, if the clerk's position becomes vacant midterm, the council has the authority to fill until the next election. They appoint until the next election. So I think that the, the format is already in place in statute, but I think that maintaining the independence of the office is vitally important.
Thank you.
And I will be writing editorials to that fact.
And I will be looking forward to them, yes.
I appreciate the, that perspective. My concern is not the unfilled vacancy, it's if there's someone in the position, there's no way for us to remove a person who is completely and utterly unqualified in trying to, I mean, let's look around and see what, what's happening in our world right now, where people are basically just, just destroying things just to destroy them. And I'm not saying that that could happen here, but it might, and I'm concerned that we have no way to remove someone who's in such an important position in our community. If there was some kind of failsafe in that regard, I, I wouldn't be in, in favor of this. And when you just spoke to, you know, we have this solution, we have this solution, but you don't have a solution for that hypothetical, and I realize it is a hypothetical, but it's- And I realize it is a hypothetical, but it's, it's coming true when you just look at our federal government right now. So it's not really as hypothetical as you think it is.
There's seven of you sitting up there right now that are in exactly that same position. And I, as a voter, believe that you all have been elected to serve your communities. If you do it badly for two years, you'll be gone.
But there's, but there's seven of us, not just one. There's just one city clerk. That's my concern.
But the clerk is also beholden to statute. And there are recourses in statute if work isn't getting done the way it's supposed to be as, as laid out in statute, land records, reportings, various and sundry things like that.
That's a very important point. A city clerk who runs an election that is less than above board will not only be removed, they will likely go to prison. So the stakes, stakes are a little bit higher in terms of removal. But, you know, I think some of us just have different opinions on, you know, different opinions on this issue. And I think we can all look at events happening on the national level. I think on both sides of the aisle, you can look at events happening. I'm not ready to throw out the Constitution. I'm not ready to say, well, let's amend the Constitution. I think it just requires some thoughtful action as opposed to, well, let's have the ability to remove them. So I agree with everything you just said, Carol. Like I said, I'll never stand in the way of placing something, I trust voters. I'll never stand in the way of placing something on the ballot, but if you need, what is it, 10 bucks to send, do a letter to the editor?
Something.
Now, if you need 20 bucks or you need a letter, let me know. Because I'll be, I'll be happy to, like I said, counsel, I mean, I'm not going to stand in the way of putting it on the ballot, but I won't, I won't be supporting it. Not only will I not be supporting it, I'll be, I'll be lobbying against it. Yes.
I also agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying and with what Counselor Spalding is saying, because things have made such a drastic turn. And, you know, the line, well, it really couldn't happen, hasn't happened before, it couldn't at will, or maybe not here, but somewhere. Can we put into ordinance a way of removal when things are going south?
I don't, you can't do it in ordinance. We'd have to change the charter and we haven't warned that change on any level. So it hasn't been warned for this hearing. So if, even if we wanted to, it would be wildly out of order at best, because it hasn't been warned for the hearing. We're having our hearing.
Okay, I get that.
This has.
I'm just, I'm just...
There are a few communities who have put language in their charters that would allow them to remove an elected official. And it certainly would be easy enough to, to research that, but not in time for this particular election, obviously. But that is, that is something that could be researched. And it wouldn't be exclusive to a clerk. It would be elected officials.
Should be.
Yeah.
So Section 313 should breeze right by, by comparison, huh? Yes.
I would like to see it on the ballot and I'm happy to discuss this in editorials and online. I would just like to see what the voters think about this, because in the research I've done, I think this would be a good move. But hey, let's see what people think.
And that's sort of where I, where I come down. So would anyone care to make, so we have, so counsel, you have the potential charter changes. This is a hearing, not hearing. So we had two potential sections, excuse me, more than two.
There's three.
We had four.
Sorry, do we have to?
One was Section 2.
Three topics.
Yeah, but sections of the charter that we would be amending. So one was Section 205. You all had that, you all had that in your packet. And you didn't, like I said, you did get the update. And that was where it would be from 205 in terms of officers elected, legal voters shall elect biannually a mayor, currently it says, and one person to service clerk and treasurer. And, and one person to service clerk and treasurer would be stricken. 301 governing body, really just house cleaning. Counsel was capitalized, but under Section E of 301, we would be adding appoint and remove at council's pleasure, the clerk who may, who may or may not be the same individual as the treasurer. And then amending Section 4 of, or subsection 4 of Section 301 to add all full or part-time. Currently it just says all city employees. And we would be adding full or part-time and then striking out to include, just a grammatical, to include full-time and part-time. So we were just making that more clear. And then under Section 313, we'd be changing that. Currently, the way our charter reads, only the mayor can sign for any matters involving real estate, conveyances, grants, leases of real estate. And we would be adding to that, it could be the mayor, the city manager, or any counselor or so duly, or any counselor duly authorized by an action of the city council. So basically, we're just adding, not excluding anything, just adding to the folks that can do that. And then under payment of taxes, that would be Section, Section B. At close of the fiscal year, we're adding the word audit there and basically saying that the city can retain up to 10% of its annual expenditures in the form of a general fund balance. So.
Nicholas, you and I had talked yesterday, did the changes, the sections get removed?
Yes, from the warning, yesterday. So the warning that you saw, counsel, this document here has the entirety of the sections that are amended. The warning itself only has the, the particular sections being amended, which is, after speaking with Carol.
We talked about it yesterday. My recommendation was that, that superfluous language be taken out, because I think it's confusing to the voters to try to find where are the changes. Yes. Not to mention the fact that there's a whole chunk in there about schools that is already gone. It provided the legislature, the charter change that's in front of them. So I think it made sense to not repeat that on the ballot, because it would just be confusing.
Yes.
And it takes up space and you pay by the word when you print the ballot, so.
May I just?
Yes.
May I ask a question about the language that was changed under 301, Section 2E? It says appoint and remove at council's pleasure the clerk who may or may not be the same individual as the treasurer. But isn't the new language saying that the treasurer is a separate position?
But it could be the same person.
Could be the same person.
Appointed to both positions.
Could be, yeah. Yeah. They could hold it to both titles.
They just don't automatically hold both, which is the way it is in statute. In statute, they are two separate positions. And in many communities, the same person runs for and gets elected for both, but they have to run separately. And they are two separate. Berry City's charter, up until this most recent charter changes under consideration, specifically says clerk and treasurer, one person who shall be clerk and treasurer. But what the, what the intention of that particular language is that it could, there could be circumstances under which the treasurer, which is a part-time position, could also be the clerk.
So in...
If that's what was in the best interest of the community.
Right. So in theory, the council could appoint Cheryl as both clerk and treasurer, even, you know, even if both of these, if this change is approved, the council could in theory appoint her to both again.
I wasn't understanding it, so, thank you.
Or not.
Or not.
Maximum, maximum possible number of options.
Right.
Okay, so counsel, everyone understands and is comfortable with the proposed charter changes? Would anyone care to make a motion to that?
I'm so moved.
Oh, take your pick.
I don't care.
Move, move second. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
And just a reminder, you will be holding a second public hearing, as is required, probably in two weeks, at which time you obviously won't be able to change any of the language, because you're approving the language as part of the warning tonight.
Correct.
So the second public hearing is mostly just for informational purposes. And I probably won't come back and, I'll be sitting at home writing.
But you know, I'll miss you.
You can zoom, Carol.
Yeah, no, it's more fun to come in.
Nice to see you, Carol.
Yes, it is.
Okay, do you have our warning handy? I thought I printed it.
I do, I have, I have several iterations of it, because I wasn't sure what you all were going to do. So let me, I think this is the...
Thanks.
This is the one that has youth first mentoring on it.
Yep. Okay, all right, I'll share, so...
And I can, I actually think I have it on...
If you've got that, I'd like to have that up on the screen, if you could. I have to find out the right document. No worries. No biggie. And we'll have the discussion. Do you have the, did you do the, the money page yet? Overall tax rate, including district, I mean, I realize it's all, have you done that?
Yes, I just don't have updated grand list.
Yeah, no, no, no worries. Could you shoot that to me? Because it's not, it's heading where I think it's heading, right? Roughly 50% of our general fund? It's got to be.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I mean, it might be four. What I'm going to suggest, counsel, is under Article 2, that we authorize a sum instead of $463,500, $600,000 for paving. I mean, you know, we're behind. And, and just because we authorize it, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. But, you know, as you saw, we received some favorable pricing, well, favorable in terms of the industry, not favorable in terms of where we were just two or three short years ago. But, you know, our streets are, you know, I've heard from citizens loud and clear, they want more paving, they want the potholes fixed, they want paving, they want things done. So I know that that's, you know, to add roughly $137,000, $36,500 to that number is probably a big ask, but I think under the circumstances, it's appropriate. Yes.
I would, I'm wholly in favor of that theoretically. I would just ask the manager to triple check that we're fine with that on the capital improvement fund balance and all that.
Is that what it was?
That we would be fine with adding that additional amount and pulling it from the capital improvement fund.
It's going to.
It's going to. Yeah. It's, it's...
I'm not taking it away.
Thank you. I understand better.
Yeah, so this, this will be approved by the voters for the, for that purpose.
I understand. Thank you. So I guess, what impact would that have on the rest of the budget?
It would just increase the, the tax rate, overall tax rate.
Don, just checking, kind of checking that for me now.
Two and a half, at least. I think in terms of that.
It would be, so, as I'm not trying to speak cryptically, counsel, but as you know, we blend, I mean, our tax rate consists of the education side and the municipal side. So when you look at our municipal budget going up 6%, our property tax rate is not going up 6% because the education tax, thank you to the folks at school, were, is relatively flat. So it's not 50/50, but if it was 50/50, our tag, if we went up 6% and the school goes up zero, we go up about three. That math isn't entirely accurate. It's not entirely inaccurate, but it's not accurate. So what I'm asking, Don, to calculate is the effect of making that change.
Goes to 7.15% increase?
What's the overall go-to?
And...
Give or take. I'm not going to hold you to it.
The overall.
The overall tax rate. Do you have that sheet handy? Or do you not calculate that? You don't?
Unless you're talking about the sheet.
Nope, talking about, yeah, yeah, that sheet, where you calculate the anticipated increase or decrease in grand list.
Yep.
Plug in the school tax rate and it gives you, it gives you our overall tax rate. Maybe we don't...
I do not have the school tax rate.
Oh, okay, no problem.
I want the school tax rate.
What's your guess, Carol?
For a school rate?
Nope, for overall.
Oh.
If we're 6.7, you said?
7.15.
7.15. So if we're seven...
Four and a half.
Yeah, give or take.
Does your, does your updated number include the two, three hundred and fifty?
So it would be, you know, give or take four and a half, counsel, four and a half percent overall tax rate increase. But I think we're putting money exactly where I've heard so many voters want it to be. It is not going to go for anything else but paving.
Right.
So it's being able, and, and, you know, honesty, $135,000 doesn't buy you a whole lot of paving, but it's better...
More paving for $0.
Better than nothing.
Yeah.
It's, it's the best we can do. Yes.
Well, I've also heard people really request better sidewalks and more sidewalks. And also, do we really make sure that we have all the flood mitigation measures we can? So if there's $130,000, I don't know. It seems to me there are a bunch of things that are crying for our need.
Does what also include sidewalks?
Yes.
I guess my question is, we negotiate our paving contracts pretty far in advance. Can we, I know we can like spend it on anything we want, but can we like logistically spend this money with the way that we map out our plan?
Yeah, I think what we would do now is knowing, knowing what we have, we would talk to Pike, which was the contractor approved today, and, and expand that scope now while we can. Now, the good thing is Pike is also doing the paving in Berry Town, so hopefully they'll be deployed in the community. And I think that we'll probably look for similar type projects that we've been doing, which is long stretches of thoroughfares, or, or start moving into neighborhoods where we can complete sections. So those are the, those are the places where we get the best pricing and the best bang for our buck. So that's, that's something we'll get to work on right away, knowing what we have to work with.
I mean, I...
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. I mean, not that many years ago, that number was actually more like 800,000. And I was on this council and had a hand in reducing it to reduce the tax rate. And when I talk to people, I tell them candidly, that was one of the worst decisions I ever participated in, participated in as mayor. So time to reverse that a little bit, add a little bit more money. And next year, I'll be back asking you for another 200,000 on top of that, because the only way to get the streets paved is to pay for it. So. So hopefully you'll support that. Don't want to put it to a vote if it's anyone opposed to doing that? Okay, thank you. I don't want to draw on your, I don't want to draw on your copy.
That's fine. Actually, we have to, because we got to make sure we sign the, the version with all the correct annotations.
Yeah, so that's why I let you, let you do that. So counsel, you, so you, we're going through that. You know, so you see Article 3 there. You see the officer, you know, officers elected, we'll just sort of scroll through it. I don't think there's many, I think there were any changes between this and what was in your packet. And then this one does in fact have the, where's the $2,000? Where am I?
This, that'll be at the bottom.
Oh, okay, so it's a separate article.
It's a separate article, yeah.
Okay.
So the Article 6 is the returning organizations asking for voter-approved assistance. Article 7 is the Vermont Granite Museum, which was placed on the ballot by the council two weeks ago for 15,000. And Article 8 would be the 2004 youth first mentoring.
So counsel, would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Take your pick. Everybody's enthusiastic. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
Let's just round for signatures, please.
Okay, so upcoming business. Nicholas, what do you have?
Yeah, so we have Christian Meyer from Green Mountain Transit will be at the meeting on the, on 422 to give you an update on Green Mountain Transit. He's, he's our representative on that board. So he's going to be here to talk about the service reduction memo that he sent, he sent to me, which I forwarded to all of you. Counselor Stockwell, your request on the police data will be on the 22nd as well. And we are also going to be, I think, I think that's, Don, is there anything, I know we talked about at a council meeting today, I think that was it for putting you on the talked about at council meeting today, I think that was it for putting you on the spot. I think that was, those were the big ones. I'm sure there's other things that'll come on between now and then, but those were two that we are, we have in the works for, that we have a flood.
Yeah, I was just going to.
Yes, flood resiliency plan update.
To speak about that. Manager and I decided to skip it this week so we could focus on the budget, but next week, this is actually going to be sort of a request from me for spending from the special projects fund. Some months ago, we were given quotes for two different studies. One was the hydrology and hydraulic study, which we've seen initial numbers for, and the other was a stormwater system study that we did not take up at the time. So next meeting, I will be asking for us to review that and then take that up with spending from the special projects fund, which was roughly $55,000 was the ask for that. So that will be our flood resiliency plan update for the 22nd.
Okay, council, also on the 22nd, well, you all know, you were there when the council reached agreement with the manager regarding a renewal of the manager's employment contract. That will be a five-year agreement currently. Scott Cameron is working on that, so working with the manager and I to just really wordsmith what the council and manager agreed to. Very pleased with that and will be presenting that for council approval also on the 22nd. I don't know that necessarily on the 22nd, council, but at some point, manager had come to, the council was sort of a community standards ordinance. Council decided at that time that they did not want to spend money on it for a legal review. I decided I did want to spend money on it for a legal review, so I'm sending, spending my own money and I will be presenting that to the council, not saying on the 22nd, but at some point in the future. Lastly, and again, this is responding to something the police chief said. Police chief was here when we were talking about cameras and the police chief mentioned that he wished, he, he would like to have a few more cameras, maybe in Enterprise Alley or, you know, other areas of the city. And so again, responding to that, we will have that on the agenda for discussion. And I have asked the manager and the police chief to talk amongst themselves and figure out where they would like to deploy those cameras and we'll have that conversation as well. So you'll see that on the agenda.
Thanks, Mary. That jogged my memory. That was the, the, the chief will be here to talk not just about the, the police stats update, but also the, the policy for use of the security cameras. And then we have a, a bid, a proposal for putting some cameras up, not just in this building, which, which doesn't have any, but Public Safety also has areas that are not covered. And then potentially some cameras in, in some locations that the chief has identified. So we should have that for your consideration on the 22nd as well when the chief is here.
So just want to warn you, I know everybody has an opinion, but I look forward to, I look forward to a pleasant and factual conversation. Yes?
I'm, I'm sorry to, I should have said this earlier, which is that we're actually coming up on the six-month adoption of the flood resiliency plan generally. So I'm working on a plan for what it would look like to update and revise that, that I will circulate to everyone, so I would expect to see that on a future meeting agenda in May as well.
You're doing good work on that, by the way.
Thank you.
Well, it's hard work. I mean, it requires a lot of your time and I know it does and I'm grateful. So thank you for doing the good work. Yes?
So hoping we could get Tess in to give us a real update on what's going on with the homeless situation.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing as she's our homelessness coordinator, I think it would be really important for her to get a lot of the facts and details about what's going on and what's going to be going on and really give us an update from what she sees on the city's aspect. I think we got a really good update tonight from the task force, but I feel that Tess could really kind of give us more information that we're really looking for on the city end.
If we can get her the numbers. We're going to work on doing that this week. Anything else, council?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I know that it's not ready, but I'd, I'd like an update on the ADU ordinance. And I know we've talked about an updated vacant building ordinance, so I'd like to hear if there are any updates on those on the 22nd.
I don't think. Did we update that? I thought we had.
The ADU ordinance is, yeah, the, that was done, yeah.
We did that.
The ADU wasn't in place.
No, it's done. That was done through the planning commission.
We completed that.
The vacant buildings, I know, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll give an update on that.
Thank you.
Okay, roundtable. Counselor Stockwell.
I love seeing the new sidewalks being put in place on Granite Street. That's really exciting. And I had a resident who had walked to work, which it says is a 15-minute walk. It's really easy for him to walk to work, but there are no sidewalks over a significant part, so it makes it really dangerous. It's hard to cross the street. He would like to see more sidewalks and that seems like an excellent idea. I misspoke earlier when I said it seems inhumane not to house people. It is inhumane to house people. And it's not true, we can't do anything about that. Of course, we can do something about it. We just have to decide we're going to do it. With that, I'll pass.
Counselor Spalding?
I have a couple of things. One, I had a really busy Saturday. I went to Montpelier and then, which was very exciting, and then I went to a philosophy talk about biking at the bike shop. And one of the conversations we had was about better infrastructure for biking. So I just am going to throw it out there because I like to bike. And I know there are other people in the community who like to bike and it would be great to have some more dedicated, and it doesn't even have to be dedicated, like, you know, like separate, but just like painted lines, infrastructure for bike lanes and that kind of thing. So I'd like to just propose we have a conversation about that at some point. And, and then I went to Spring Pling and it was a wonderful time as always. So, and I'm very pleased that the library has raised money to, to, to eat the gap that they had, so, you know, the funding gap, so. And that's all. Thank you.
Counselor Burshron?
I was looking at the civic center schedule online and for people who want to walk, I guess the BOR is open, I think, at 8:30 in the morning for.
Yes.
For walking.
Monday to Friday.
The auditorium's open, it looks like every day this week, maybe next week too, for people who like to play pickleball. And the Easter egg hunt is going to be on Saturday, April 19th, at the BOR. And during school vacation, the week of the 21st or the 25th of April, the BOR has open turf and, and it's different days for different things, I believe. It's lacrosse one day, soccer another day, football a day.
Correct.
So it's good to see that, you know, we're opening it up and making it useful. And that'll pass.
Counselor Shonbell?
I'll pass.
Question?
Two things. I went to Foxy's for dinner on Friday night and had maybe one of the best meals of my life. So if you haven't had dinner, I, I'm there for breakfast a couple of days a week already, but if you haven't had dinner at Foxy's yet, please go there as soon as possible. And another is that starting this weekend is the first of the workshops for people in Berry City and beyond that are made possible through the VCRD's Climate Catalyst Grant. This first one this weekend is going to be about how to make a rain barrel. I drove a trailer to Lindenville, to a farm in Lindenville on Sunday morning to pick up a whole bunch of barrels. So 10 people attend that workshop, will go home with their own rain barrels and the other 10 or so people will sort of learn how to make barrels and they're easy to find. I've got a guy now. So, and everyone who registers and attends both this workshop and the rain garden workshop next week will go home with a $25 gift card to Nelson's Hardware as part of this grant. We also have future workshops on how to, when and how to permit to your property for flood-related improvements and on a program called Storm Smart about regulating the, figuring out the stormwater on your own properties. So I had put the links to register for the next two workshops, which are the rain barrel and the rain garden in Front Porch Forum. Registration ahead of time is how you get access to those gift cards, so please make sure that you do. It also helps us plan. There will be some food there for people and I'll push them out again this week, but please, please hear the word.
Counselor Deering?
Let's see, thank you all for the approval of getting youth first mentoring on the ballot. $2,000 isn't much to some, but it's definitely a good little start for this organization. I worked with Sally a little bit on trying to get some signatures and definitely, I think it was 500 or 600 signatures, wasn't going to be doable. So we really appreciate your kindness to put that on the ballot. I see this as an organization that really can thrive and grow, especially where there's opportunity like there is here in Berry City. And we really need those. I had some people step up in my life when I was growing up that provided that gap that I needed. So really, these kinds of programs are near and dear to my heart. So I'll enter that. Thank you.
Thank you. The library event was awesome. I saw, saw a few of you there, but it was pretty packed. The highlight of the evening, besides a generous donor pledging $10,000 if they could raise 10,000, another 10,000 in seven days, but it only took them three, they actually hit their mark this afternoon. The highlight of the evening was the Italian sandwiches. I don't know if you all have.
I guess. The best.